That I will open our work session and hopefully Paul and Kevin will join us momentarily. First side of my business this evening is the parking pass, access permit, beach parking, basically everything to do with four wheel drive at this point. We've been kicking that around for a couple of years now, playing with it. As everybody knows, we've got the access passes now that we issued to residents of the county. And then we have some other parking passes that we do to property owners in the four wheel drive. And then we do, if they have a rental property, for instance, they get a couple passes to go with their rental property. And then anyone in the county that has the white cling pass, we issued two per household this year, gets those to utilize to go to not only reentry permits if you're on the beach, but to all of our facilities such as our recycle centers, et cetera. So I know everyone has seen emails and Facebook about this swap meet and basically the abuse of these passes over the past several weeks. And people are renting out their passes to anyone that wants to pay money to get them, basically. Now, those are free. We give those to everyone in the county. And so we don't have any provisions in place to deal with that. I guess none of us really thought that we would be dealing with people trying to rent out their cling passes that they use for reentry and access to our recycle centers to tourists that are coming in the area to make a quick buck. And so I have talked to a lot of people at this point in Carova specifically and around the county and other areas and postulated the idea of, do we even consider closing the beach off at this point? And I've talked to a couple of you as well. And so I'll put this up for a topic for discussion this evening for us to bat around pros and cons, all of the above. We just had another horse killed this past weekend. That makes three this year. So, you know, as we talk through this, there's another overriding concern, and that is for the health and safety of the wild horses that are up there. We have a sea turtle nest that has now been run over this year for probably the first time in anyone's memory. That's can happen, I guess, just as, just as the horses get hit and deer up there. But, you know, all those things are coming together at one time, basically, it seems like, and culminating this year for whatever reason. And so anyway, I just want to have a discussion with the board and see what you guys thought about it as we move forward. You know, we tend to kind of wait too long in the year to deal with these things and deal with them in October, November, December, or at the retreat. And we started moving some of that stuff back so that especially when it comes to the tour season, the county staff is prepared to deal with that in the coming year. So it seemed like a good time to have this discussion.
Is there anything that we can do to the people who are selling and renting the passes? Is there any restriction we could put on it?
I don't think there's anything in our ordinance right now, but I mean, we could put something in there. But I think that it's, there's probably going to be some difficulty in enforcing.
But some of what I spoke with the chairman about is the possibility of amending or developing an ordinance provision relative to those cling decals, that they're not assignable, that it's an offense to allow others to use them. You could put a civil penalty on that. You could provide that if someone, if it's found that someone is using the decals in a manner that is not intended and allowing others to use it, that they could be repossessed by the county and revoked. So there's a number of different things you could do to try to influence that behavior.
How, I have to put my head around how that's even going to work with from an enforcement standpoint. And I wish Kevin was here to address that. And I know he's hopefully on his way. But if, if I'm a deputy and I'm checking passes, residents get the cling. So do they look for the sticker and then say, let me see your ID? I can't imagine that they do all of that on a weekend. They just check for the pass. So how burdensome would it be to enforce a civil penalty?
It could be burdensome, including, you know, we know that there's this online Facebook swap thing that's going on. I mean, it necessitates somebody perhaps monitoring that.
And as far as that goes, you know, let's suppose I buy the week of July 4th, and I realize, wait a minute, it's the following week. I guess, I don't have a problem if they sell it at face value and then go and book another week. I guess I don't have a problem with that, per se, but that's not what's going on here. I think there's people who are looking to make a buck off of passes, and that is really troublesome. And I don't know how, if we can stop it, it even, I don't know. It begs the question of, do we need to do something different? I don't even know if these passes are achieving what we set out to achieve with them.
Well, there are two different issues, of course. There's a cling on decal that, as the chairman noted, allows someone to use a convenience center, reentry permit, and park it on the beach. That goes to property owners and residents.
Right.
There's the other, of course, which is a beach access permit, which only 300 per week are issued.
Right.
And we've kind of taken the view so far that if the 300 are gone, they're gone. And if someone is out there selling what they obtained, so much the better. It doesn't increase the number of people that are permitted on the beach.
Right. I get that.
That part of it, yeah, isn't, isn't, is troublesome to me. We, somebody bought it for a week, they used it for two days, and they said, hey, there's three days left.
Right.
You know, that's not a big deal. The, I guess the whole question is, and for me, living up there, having lived in a four wheel drive and now in Corolla on pavement proper, talking to residents up there, do we consider shutting the beach down and leaving it open to residents of this county and renters that have rented up there? Eventually, we're closing in on it going to look like Corolla essentially from a density standpoint. There's over, over a thousand homes right now, and more going up every minute with 3,000 or 2,000 left, roughly, to build out there. The traffic has gotten considerably worse just from the number of people that are visiting that are renting the homes. You've just got that regular traffic. That's not counting day trippers that are coming up. And then you throw in however many residents are using their cling passes and renting those in addition to the 300 we've, we've put out to access this area. So all along, I have thought that this area was going to have to be closed sooner or later because it just can't support the volume of traffic and the number of people. I've talked to, I don't know how many people that are, you know, residents that don't go there anymore because it's no longer enjoyable for them to go up there anymore, to go and recreate on that beach because it is overcrowded and the traffic that's, that's there. As a side note, I spoke to the sheriff last week before I even, you know, postulated this idea, could he deal with that? Could he even consider, you know, regulating vehicles on and off the beach? And, and his answer is yes, he could handle that. Now, would it take some time to do that? Yes. Would it be a mess the first year? Absolutely. But as people understand that this beach is no longer open to just the general public anymore, then, then those things change in how they, how they react to it. So, but it's just, you know, an idea at this point, so.
Okay. So as it stands right now, the passes that we issue, the 300, it just allows, allows individuals to park on the beach. Without a pass, anybody could still drive up and down the beach.
Yep.
So I don't think closing off the beach 100% is necessarily the answer. But if we have, I mean, because right now, you could have 5,000 people in a day riding down the beach if they want.
Right.
And only 300 of them can stop and park.
Right.
So those 300 that are stopping and parking probably ain't the problem because they're driving, they're parking, and they're there. So it's the ones that you're saying that are just constantly driving up and down, up and down, up and down.
Excellent point. Kevin said this two years ago when we started this, that, by the way, we're recording this, so.
That's fine.
Just make sure your mic's on.
It is.
That it should be an access pass rather than a parking permit.
Well, I think we talked about that at one point.
We did. And then maybe that's, maybe that's the next step that we take as, as a county to limit access and start backing into something else. You know, like I said, it's, I'm not suggesting any action tonight just to have this discussion with you.
Because I thought, the feedback I had heard was that the passes have helped a lot. You know, and I thought there was some good feedback that we got from that.
Yeah, they definitely, I mean, you can see the difference between over 1,000 a week to 300.
Yeah, and parking and all, yeah.
You can feel it.
What's the maximum penalty, civil penalty that could be levied?
75 bucks right now if they're violating stuff?
75.
75?
Yeah, I think it's 75.
That's our current penalty. Yeah, it's about the cost of the pass.
Yeah, which we do that, I mean, and the other thing with Senate Bill 300, and I know this is being recorded, anybody can Google Senate Bill 300. You tell somebody you're parking, we'll use Bill, sorry, Bill, I like Bill Noons, he's parked there and he doesn't have a permit. He doesn't have a pass. I walk up, we get an approach bill. It's a civil penalty. We can give him a $75 ticket, tell him he has to have a parking pass or permit to be on the beach. We can't make him leave. Senate Bill 300, you can't make him leave. So 75 bucks, they pay it. I'll say this, I worked beach duty last Saturday. I worked this whole weekend too, so. And I think I have to work beach duty this upcoming weekend. I would say, just in my views, in my opinion of being out there, the few days that I've worked it and been out since COVID, and we put the passes into play, this is the second year, 30, I'm not going to say 40%, but I would say a third to 40% less traffic, less, you know, it has, the passes have helped. And I was talking to Neil Smith this morning, and he said he worked the ramp yesterday, the whole shift, he worked the ramp. And 95, you know, and I, you know, in the morning when we set up, we ride down to see if they have the passes, do they have the passes in their window? Nine out of 10 cars have the pass like they're supposed to. If they don't see one, you talk to them. And a lot of them on Saturdays and Sundays, they're check-in days. Hey, I'm staying Owen Sandfiddler or wherever, my pass is at the house, it's 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock.
Right.
And they're checking in at 3 o'clock. I'm not writing a guy a charge for three hours if they got a pass. You know, obviously, we make notes, our computers are eligible to be in the vehicles. So, you know, like you said, it's documented. I mean, we wrote tons of tickets, the civil penalties for not having the pass, you know, as well as other things. But I would, I wouldn't say 40%. I would say probably 35% less traffic on the beach, less people. Two years ago, like during COVID, when we were selling the thousand passes, and then there were some people that were going out there and not even still having the passes. Pre-Senate Bill 300, we write people tickets just left and right for anything, if you don't like the color of their car. But not that extreme. But they did, I do, those two years, the beach was stupid crazy, stupid busy, stupid dangerous. And I worked beach duty those probably four to eight times. And it was crazy. Those two years during COVID, now, like I said, I would say a third to 40% less. And I do think it's the passes.
Now, they've helped some.
They've helped.
In about two months of the year, three months in the summertime?
About four now. Well, we've expended the season.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, so as for, than you being in the Sheriff's Department, is it, is it that busy those four months? Or is it more, more maybe two months of the summer?
When school gets out up north, like in June, you see it, like after that second week of June, it's, it gets busier. And then July, I don't, you know, and I don't know where, some other schools go longer or some, summer school or something. But like July, around July 4th, it's, it's popping. It's busy. It was busy last, last weekend when I worked.
So around toward the middle, middle, late August, it starts backing down a little bit?
A little. But I mean, like, like Bob said, I mean, second week of June till probably the end of August, Memorial or Labor Day, it's, it's crazy. It's busy.
I think maybe we're getting it confused with the difference between the access passes and the clings. Because what's happening with these swap meets is the clings are being sold.
It's the clings, really, that are moving.
And going out. And what's a $75 penalty if I rent my cling for $100?
Right. It's nothing. Yeah.
So we need to look at possibly raising the civil penalty that's out there. And maybe on the access passes, we put, or I mean, the clings, we put a numerical number so that it can be put in a database who that pass belongs to and could be easily pulled up and say, well, that doesn't belong to you. What are you doing with it?
Yeah, but I don't know on that because you could go, I mean, me and you could go to the beach, and I ride with you, and we bring my pass. I mean, that, that could happen. I think.
The problem is, is that, you know, the passes are intended for use in the household. And if you come and visit, a friend comes to visit Owen, and he says, yeah, man, here, you can use my pass. He's not gaining anything. He's not making money off of it.
Oh, they've been sold as much as 200 bucks. I mean, I've, on the, I mean, that's, I have an issue with that.
We've got, we've got another issue, and that is how to deal with these clings. And if we can't figure it out, the other side of it is we go back to the hard card pass again, and you don't get a cling. I mean, that, the whole point of that was to make it easier for the, A, for reentry permits, and using our recycle centers so that we could stop people from out of the area using our recycle centers. That was the intent of that. And then as a side part of that, it worked great for people that live in the county to be able to go and go to our beach. And so we, you know, if it, if it comes, continues to be a problem, then we probably have to address that as well and, you know, figure that out. I don't know what that is, but it's, it's a mess. And it's, and it's, at the end of the day, it's just greed.
Yeah, it is. And there's a lot of traffic with, yeah, just, yeah, people being.
So, you know, the only way I see through it, you know, yes, we probably, we definitely need to put some, these are not transferable, they're not, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and then set a fine for that and possible revocation of those.
Right.
Right, that's, you know.
They cheated on the ATV permits before. And I know we, like, did we not violate a couple peoples?
And we amended the ordinance that allowed for, for seizure by law enforcement upon determination.
Yeah, we, obviously, I know we've done a few of those in the, in the, in the years.
We can fix that part of it. We can deal with that part of it. But, but, yeah, to Owen's point, and, and I met with the sheriff recently. I've been kind of meeting with him every couple weeks. And I don't know, Ike, have you reached out, talked to him about amending some of our ordinances and working with Megan at this point for?
I have, yeah.
To deal with Senate Bill 300.
We need to set up an appointment with the sheriff.
So to your point about Senate Bill 300, got them working on helping to fix some of that language in there to make it so you guys have a little bit more, you know, bite, basically, in dealing with, with people. And it just deals with how our ordinances are written.
Yeah. I mean, because basically what that Senate Bill 300 did, it basically took power away from local governments of being able to do different stuff. And I mean, there's been a couple other ones. What was the one they were going to, we were working on the lot sizes forever, and there was a Senate bill, it didn't go through, but 270 something or whatever. And that would say we wouldn't even have a say-so in the lot sizes. So I mean, like I said, that's, but like I said, my take on it, it's, I do think the passes are being manipulated, not per se, you know, I mean, I'm on that page, you go on that page, swap pass meet or whatever, I got an invite. I'm like, okay, whatever. So I accepted it. And, you know, I mean, I do, and it's the same names. I mean, like I said, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to look to see the same people that are selling them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and how are they getting that many passes?
So, you know, to that point, does it make more sense then to have discussion about making it an access pass versus a parking pass? So you changed it so that the, you know, you can't just ride around out there. You have to have a pass to go up on the beach.
I mean, when we, when we did the limit, when we limited the, the initial passes from whatever, from those two years of COVID where it was, it was dangerous. I mean, I don't care, you could be a sprinter and you could, had a chance of getting hit by a car. It was too many people out there two years ago. So when we limited them, like I said, it cut it back. But I mean, we, when we said we were doing that, that was something we had talked about doing, which I don't have a, I don't have a, you know, if you can get an annual pass, you know, whatever. I mean, regardless of what it is, there's, somebody's going to give it, Megan's going to be my best friend, and I'm going to give her my pa, you know, I mean, there's going to be manipulated some.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, as long as they're not selling it and making money.
Right, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. If her friend comes in to visit, one of her college, her college roommate shows up and, you know, wants to go out, I gotta work today, go ahead. You know, I mean, that's not what we're talking about.
No, it's where they're selling them. They've sold, I think, 200 or 250 is the highest that one sold for.
So, you know, that's why we're having this discussion today. And going into next season, so I guess my real question is, do we leave it exactly the same and just put in, you can't sell the pass? Do we talk about doing an access pass, period? It, you no longer, it's not a parking pass anymore. You have to have a pass to go up to the four wheel drive beach to stop the, the amount of just people riding around, joyriding around up there as well. I mean, it is significant.
There's a lot of people riding around. But also, when I've done the horse tours, I've always looked to see if anybody had the, you know, the tag. And a lot of times you don't see them. So I think a lot of people go up there and just park till somebody comes and catches them.
Right.
And then they move on.
And that, that may be going on. And the easy way to stop that is?
Have access.
Have an access pass, you know, and.
It, it is something we've talked about.
Because we have somebody that works the ramp the entire time, and you sit there at the ramp. And like, I even thought this when I first started working the beach, of why is somebody sitting at this ramp? But one car blocks that ramp or does, or a car, like a little Volvo tries to ride on the beach, and then they block the ramp. It can cause just the most chaotic because that's the road of travel for this business or this homeowner. I want to go home. I have groceries, and it's 95, and my AC don't work in my vehicle.
Right.
And then the ramp's blocked because somebody tried to drive a car out there.
Did you stop them on the asphalt before they got into sand?
We do. I mean, we sit there, I mean.
Because there's no turnaround right there.
You work the ramp. We usually, we, when the guys work beach duty, and like I said, last Saturday, I worked the ramp until 1:30. Hope the sheriff's not watching this. But we worked the ramp till 1:30, and I said, I need to switch with somebody. I worked the ramp from 9 to 1:30 because you just not yell at people, but like, hey, you can't bring that out here. Hey, I mean, you can't park there. Hey, you need to move. And, you know, I'm moving. I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna, I'll count you down like a child, and then you're gonna get the ticket.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But it's.
So, yeah, it's, so, you know, depending on which way this goes, Ike and I, Ike came over to Corolla the other day, and we took a ride around, went up to the four-wheel drive, and went up to the park, et cetera. And, you know, the other thing we can do is talk to the state and see if we can talk them into giving us some more dirt basically there and make that turnaround a little bit better, bigger, wider, you know. Obviously, we were trying to do this, when we did the land swap deal, the intent was to move the ramp further north, another mile up the beach. The state isn't, was okay years ago with it, and now is not okay with us. So, you know, I don't know what has to happen there. I guess it's personnel change or somewhere at the state to grant us access. And until that happens, you know, we'll see if we can work with them to maybe give us another 20 feet or 30 feet to make it a bigger U-turn. We need to do that anyway. I don't know how many tractor trailers have been down there and stuck and.
Oh, if you have a big, if you have a bigger SUV or something too, I mean, like I said.
Can't make the swing.
You can't make the turn. It needs to be bigger. And I mean, there's signs that say, no parking anytime here, and you'll have somebody with a doctorate degree park right under it. Like I said, I count them down like a child. You got five seconds, move, or you're gonna get some paper.
Well, I think we probably should look at next year, trying to get some way to enforce it or have a penalty or change EDO that, you know, if you get caught in them. Because again, it affects the convenience sites as well, too. That's not right.
Well, and they did it with the ATV permits, as like Ike said.
We did this to try to save taxpayers money for, you know, the trash.
The dump fees.
Yeah, dump fees and this and that. And I will say, when I talk to the tenants there, they, it work, and they are checking them and turning them away. So it's helped a lot. So I think, you know, maybe trying to.
That definitely has to happen. I mean, we definitely have to protect, you know, these are ours, the counties basically. These clings are ours, right? We, so we need to protect those. There's basically two things. One is putting that in place so that they're not resellable or reassignable, and then a fee structure associated with that. And then the other question is, do we, do we go to an access pass versus a parking pass?
I think access pass because we've got to think about the horses, too. We're having a lot of issues, like you say, what, three have been killed?
Yep, one this past weekend got hit and broke, and had, she had to be put down.
Yeah. And I mean, and like that situation, all the witnesses and everything, I mean, the hor, and it happens. I mean, the horse.
It's an accident.
Yeah, the horse ran right out in front of the, you know, and I mean, and like you said, for the, I mean, I feel terrible for the horse, you know, as well as, but I mean, I feel sorry for the, the small child who wasn't doing anything wrong. He wasn't speeding. He wasn't, and I mean, the horse came over, per all the witnesses, and smacked into his vehicle. And, you know, there's, you know, I mean, people are, I mean, social media is.
Yep.
Brutal.
And it can be brutal.
It's a shame we can't put one of those, those, like those highway trackers right there, taking just how many people enter the beach and all that on a daily basis.
We could probably get.
You could get one of those.
Because that would give a good idea than.
I, I think they have had, they've had a traffic count right at the ramp.
I'd like to see what that number is because then that might help us, we have another work session of, okay, we're getting these many people on weekends during the week.
Well, the other thing is too, you could, like you said, you could put it on the ri, and there's some, like you see Tweety trucks, different people that work back there as well as some of them might live back there. I mean, I've seen the same truck up and down the beach four to five times in a day.
Yeah, there's a volume of traffic is significant. And not all of it's bad. I mean, there's a, there's a huge service industry, right, to take care of these homes. So they're, you're up there.
I mean, I'm up there, too. You're right, yeah.
Yeah. So it's not, and that's not who we're, we're not trying to inhibit them in any way, shape, or form, right? It is really about, A, you know, the volume of traffic out there, if we can limit that a little bit further, you know, it's good for Nest, it's good for the, for the Wild Horse Fund, it is good for the residents that live there, and the residents of this county that want to go up there and have stop going up there because it's so busy.
The other concern that I've heard is speed on the beach, and especially on the interior roads. And just like out here on the highway, speed will kill. And.
We don't have any speed limit signs. There's no stop signs. There's no yield signs. There's no.
There is, there's speed limit signs on the beach.
On the beach, but I'm talking behind, it's behind the dunes.
You're talking about behind the dunes, yeah.
And our law enforcement officers do a good job up there. Don't get me wrong.
They can't, they can't be everywhere, so.
Can we put speed cameras up there? They can, like they have in Virginia.
Yeah, but you can't enforce, in North Carolina, you can't enforce.
Who says you can't?
I mean, you can't.
Until you get caught.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's another, maybe an engagement with Carova Corp or Riggs to see if, about putting signs up there, speed limit signs or caution signs. North Swan Beach, the neighborhood, HOA actually did put some, few signs out up there. But Carova's just, and as we improve the roads, through funding that to improve the roads, it's allowed the speeds to increase on the roads because they're better. So we've got kind of a double-edged sword there.
Different question then. Maybe Kevin, you can answer this. I know, or maybe Megan, you can answer. Is there any, I guess, can we restrict the type of vehicle that tries to access the beach?
I tell people all the time, if they try to pull up there, and they'll ask questions.
Because what's a poor vet that one, drive, trying to drive in the sand through there?
They're gonna get a tow bill that they won't forget.
We can. It's part of, it's part of the, the local act that's just for Curritec County Regulation of Motor Vehicles at Beaches. A county made by ordinance regulate, restrict, and prohibit the use of dune or beach buggies, Jeeps, motorcycles, cars, trucks, or any other form of power-driven vehicle specified by the governing body of the county on the four-shore beach strand in the barrier dune system. So I think with that, yeah, you could.
Yeah. That, I will say that with what Megan said, and we've had that run in. If that guy comes out there in a trailer, and he's got a UTV, and it's tagged, it meets all the requirements, he has insurance, and we check them, and we've stopped them, and we've wrote someone for speeding. If they have all the requirements, even though our ordinance says, but if they meet, that one, that's, that's one of the things that we would have, need to clear up, clean up a little bit, that ordinance. Because if they're licensed, insured, windshield wipers that works on that low-speed vehicle, and they bring it out there, and it's got all the stuff that General Statute in North Carolina says, and then we wrote them a ticket, that's probably gonna get.
Yeah, but then you get these out-of-state people that come in there with a front-wheel drive, little whatever.
Oh, yeah. We try to catch them at the ramp. I mean, we say, hey, ho, don't.
Yeah. Actually, we dealt with that, Kevin. When we went through and did all this, and Ike, you were still the attorney at the time, looked at that and said, no, we can deal with it. Because there was, when they created the UTV low-speed vehicle law to allow them to ride on city town streets, whatever, you felt pretty strongly at the time that our language allowed.
Yes, I think our local act, as Megan read it, is broad enough to cover any type of, of motor vehicle.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
First of all, my apologies for being late.
I was late, too.
Norfolk's fun. Couple of comments, and I missed the beginning of the discussion about, and, but specifically horses and the traffic on the beach. So, and Kevin made a good point that, you know, the horse just did what horses do. And as a horse owner, as a horse breeder, as a horse trainer, I can tell you, I've had horses run into parked cars that no one's even in.
Sure.
The car. So I think that I'm not, you know, it's not always the driver's fault.
No.
And, you know, so I'm somewhat a little, I guess, apprehensive about using that as a, you know, because there's still going to be accidents, no matter how many drivers are on the beach. Because I think we still hit horses in the winter time when there's like nobody on the beach.
Oh, yeah. It happens, yeah.
So I would. Um, I would suggest speed is probably an issue. Um, and, you know, when there's less people, when there's less law enforcement at nighttime, when there's no one looking, I, I think that's probably, you know, something that's, that's an issue and a challenge. Anyway, I just wanted to add those comments.
Absolutely. And it, and, and, yeah, and I've said as much that, you know, that the, the reality is, you know, volume's gonna create problems. And, you know, we're, the volume's up, so it's, you know, the likelihood of more incidents is gonna go up. But, yes, we had one hit, and we had it ultimately put down this weekend, and that was not a result of anyone doing anything wrong. It's, you know, at the end of the day, it is a wild animal that got hit by a vehicle.
Just like a deer on one-fifty-eight or.
So, you know, that, that is not, but it, but, you know, if we can do anything to limit the traffic, uh, for a myriad of reasons, and that just being one of them, then, you know, I'm in favor of that. Now, as I said, the question is, do we just talk about an access pass, since switching it from a parking pass to an access pass to just further restrict the number of vehicles that are out there?
And I, I mean, I anticipated that that was the aspect of the discussion. Um, I guess one of my concerns also is there are people that have no desire to go park on the beach. You know, they wanna go for a drive, they hope to see horses, so there's two aspects of that. One is, I don't know how we do it, but the risk is coming off as protecting horse tours as the only way that you can go see horses. I mean, I've had people that have stayed in our cottage that one day it was really hot, and they decided, hey, let's go for a drive, and let's see if we can see horses, and they succeeded, and they didn't have to follow horse tour to find them. Because they were like, right there. And so that perception, you know, a, a, you know, a right, if you will, or individual freedom, I'm somewhat leery about, you know, what that looks like and how that's, you know, the ability to go up there gets compromised. Yep, anyway.
Okay.
I'll say this too, and the other thing far as the beach and everything, uh, last Saturday I worked, I physically watched, when I left the ramp, seven different horse tour vehicles, and I know they catch bad reps, but social media is not always true. And I physically wa- I parked, and I was in an unmarked vehicle. Nobody knew that, that was a cop. And I did not witness violations, and I don't own a horse tour, I've never been on one, but, you know what I'm saying? Like, I do think the horse tour owners with the rules and stuff, I mean, like, and I know Bob, I mean, they've gotten better, the violations, like, if they get in trouble, we report them, they're tracked, where they can get heavier fines, they could get suspensions and whatever. And over the last five years, the tour drivers are educated better, and I, I've even had a lot of locals say, you know, those guys are doing this, they're, you know, not, the negativity on it has dropped. I mean, although somebody will put a picture, and that picture could have been from eight years ago, you know, on social media, look at this.
That's actually something that I address, because I, I, you know, unless you know the date of the photo, is it this weekend, was it four years ago, and that's, that's somewhat, it's not very apparent.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's, I mean, and the deputies are out there, and they're, I mean, like you said, and you're trying to, A, the main thing, and that's we advertise, we have clean, safe, clean, safe beaches. I remember we had that work session where they advertised the Corolla and Corova, clean, safe beaches. Our beaches are clean, they're safe. I mean, nothing's a hundred percent, but.
Uh, you still have a few drivers out there that are still gonna just disregard the.
They're gonna do whatever, right.
Yeah, because I yelled at one the other day. He, there was a hor- I was trying to drive down a narrow pa- narrow path, get to the house, and the tour operator stops right in the middle of the road so he could see the horses. I started tooting my horn, and he looked at me, and then he pulls up onto the dunes at the side, and I walked up, I said, are you really supposed to be doing that? And he yelled at me, so I said, you know, okay, well.
You write down, you write down his vehicle, his company, and his permit number.
It's education. I, I do think, I know a few years ago, when Davenport was a sergeant, and he's since retired, I think for somebody to get an access pass, a permit or whatever, where you get it, and you get it, you pay for it, and you get it online, I think another video, I mean, with technology today, I know we did a recruitment video. I think we need to do another video to educate, air down your tires, the different problems. I mean, you know, somebody gets stuck, and Rhonda's out there, you know, they're, they get a tow bill or whatever, you know, and then we write them a county, hit them with a county ordinance for not airing down. Um, and we do that, you know, sometimes, so, I mean, it's like, but I think before they can redeem their parking pass or access pass, they should be wa- and I'm not saying a twenty-minute video, but a, a four-minute video of, hey, this is this, don't walk on the dunes, don't get within such-and-such feet of the horses, don't, I mean, and it can be something that is mandatory to watch. I've watched the video, click. Are you still here? Are you a robot? You know, click, and then when they're done, then they can print their pass, because there's a lot of them, they're just like, oh, this is our fir- and I mean, I'm not knocking, you know, I'm glad they're here, and I'm spending all the money you can spend and max your credit cards out, we love you. But, um, we just got here, it's our first time here.
So can we, can we just, I guess, get staff to get some more data for us, maybe, volume-wise, and if it's weekends, weekdays, and then, I mean, you probably have another work session and discuss, based on the volumes, is there a, I mean, it may help us come up with numbers and make a decision.
I mean, you could rent one, or you can get a tracker to drive right where they click, I mean, or we could volunteer Owen to stand out there with a clicker on Saturday or something.
Yeah, that's, that's why, that's why I wanted this discussion now. It came up, and I think now is a good time. Uh, if we can even go down to getting DOT to drop a traffic counter up there, um.
I think that's highly, I think that would provide a lot of data, and I think.
I'm not, I told the board, you missed that, I was not suggesting action tonight, but, okay, where do we need to go, right? And, and so gathering data obviously is a big part of that.
I think we also need to message what, what it is, the difference between when we say a parking pass and an access pass. I think we need to be very clear as to what that means. Just because people get used to, you know, when we first did the parking passes, people were up in arms about it, upset about it. Uh, now, it's almost like a, a right to try to get one.
Right.
And I think we just have to be very clear, um, as to what the difference, what, what we're doing, why we're doing, the difference between a parking pass and an access pass, who has that, who, who is eligible for an access pass? How will those be given out?
But if we just do an access pass, then the parking pass will go away.
That takes care of it, right. You, you can't go out without an access pass, and so, um, yeah, those are, and then, does that number change, maybe? Do you go five-hundred versus three-hundred? You know, I mean, there, there are layers to that, too.
Right.
Um, you know, so, um, but yeah, I, I just, I, it's great discussion, um, and that, that was the whole intent tonight, was to have some discussion and.
Yeah, and like I said, I think if you do an access pass, too, like you said, if it was, you're not, if it's a blue-colored pass, and that guy's a resident, obviously, a county resident should have access to drive, you know.
You're going, right, wow.
But, and then like maybe a different color for the ones that are bought that aren't, you know, so you know the difference, and. I would say not, I would say for the most part, I mean, they're, it's, I mean.
It's being adhered to by the, for the most part.
Yeah, and there's a little bit, the manipulation. When I joined that page, is, I was just amazed. I was like, hey, man.
I, I, I just got, it got me thinking, how hard would it be to make one?
Oh, they, it's, it's been, it's been done.
We know.
The cling, right.
It's been done.
So, uh, no, the, yeah, the clings, you know.
Clings have been made. I mean, it's been done. We've, we've caught, we've caught, and some people were given tickets.
Okay, well, um, so Ike, are you clear or unclear? Okay, um, all right, so next up this evening, we have a, a business license ordinance discussion, which probably brought out most of the people in the room here. Just as a refresher to the board, we've talked about this for a couple, three, probably three years now, and, and said, two years ago, we were going to do this, and then last winter, again, reaffirmed that. And to the people that are in the room, and maybe the public that'll be watching this later, um, one of the things we have started doing is building a website, a business website for the mainland, a community calendar. And, uh, any business on the mainland is eligible to be on this website and post maybe any specials or doing events. If you got a band coming in, live music, those kind of things, uh, you know, soft shells down to BJ's when that's in season, that kind of thing. So, uh, it's a, that was an, uh, an idea I had fleshed out over years, and, um, wanted to see come to fruition to help our businesses here and be more supportive of our businesses here. And part of that process is knowing who's in business in this county. And right now, uh, we don't have a clue who's in business in this county. We do not have a business registration process. Uh, it has become apparent in talking with not only Commissioner Payment, but, uh, you know, we have a mutual person that we deal with. Uh, they can't open up accounts, commercial accounts, uh, because they don't have a business license when dealing with some of these national corporations. So they don't have access to all that they have, or maybe even better pricing on something. Um, so there is a much broader picture at play here as we discuss the registration of businesses in our county, and knowing who's in, doing business within our county. And, um, so that's why we're, we're having this here again to go through that again. We talked about it at our retreat in, um, January, I believe, or December, and, um, and as this website is starting to come, uh, into fruition, it's now time to have more discussion about that and what that looks like, uh, its implementation, and any fees that may be associated with that. So Ike, do you have anything on your end?
Well, I, I, I just kinda do the intro, and I think Megan wants to go through the, uh, the draft ordinance that she's put together, just walk you through it, and then receive your comments, uh, or suggestions as to what you might like to see in, in, in ordinance. Uh, the, the other purpose that's in, that's been discussed and is important is to, um, make sure that persons coming into Currituck County to do business are locating their businesses in a building or, or a piece of property, uh, on or in which the business is permitted, either by the UDO or through the North Carolina State Building Code. And we've had numbers of instances over the years where people have come in and unwittingly leased, uh, or bought a piece of property, and only to find out after they've spent a lot of time and money that they can't locate their business there because of those issues. And we think that would help on the front end to cure a lot of that, because the result is that staff gets yelled at as the people are understandably frustrated, and then, of course, you commissioners start receiving telephone calls that we're not business-friendly. Um, and so we think this would be another, another way to help assist people looking to operate a business within Currituck County.
And Bill, you, uh, you, did you not tell me that Bill's actually, I mean, you, he's here tonight?
Bill, Bill's here, he's just gone next door to look at that property. I don't know what he found, but I know that it, it was not evidently a happy, uh, occasion that the proprietor, uh, enjoyed at that time.
Okay.
Because of what Bill found, and I guess because of the codes that are relevant or required for that type of business in a residential structure.
Okay, um, you know, just to dissuade anything that's been said on social media, uh, we're not here to come in and audit your records to see how much business you're doing in this county. That's not what we're talking about. We just wanna know who's in business in our county and hopefully help you in that process. We don't audit your taxes and come in, we, I guess we could, but we don't. I get a tax bill for my, my two locations every year for personal property, and that's it. What's in, what's inside the store? It's computers, desks, telephones, chairs, carpet. That's it. That's all we're talking about here. Some of the things that have been postulated on social media is that it's, it's a tax, it's gonna be based on volume, it's gonna be this, it's gonna be that. None of that is, is applicable in this situation at all. And I guess Megan, maybe you're, uh.
Yeah, I'll just go through. So before you, I have a draft of what we could use, but of course, we're having the discussion now, so I would be happy to hear your thoughts, suggestions, or any questions you may have. Um, but like all of our ordinances, um, it starts with the general statutes that give us this authority, and, and then to echo what County Manager just mentioned, the purpose behind this would be to make sure that these businesses are in compliance with our zoning regulations, state building code, and also to let county personnel, um, fire department, sheriff's office, know where these businesses are located, um, as well. So just going through, um, this would apply to all businesses where their place of business is conducted in Currituck County. That would not necessarily be their primary place of business. They may have a business located in another county or another state, but if they have a place of business here in Currituck County. So if they have that, um, they would first have to obtain a business license. Now, if you go through, each location would have to have a separate license, and in eight-dash-one-twenty-seven, it goes through the application process. So every business would have to go through and have the following information that they would have to supply to the county tax director. Uh, name of applicant, whether the applicant is an individual, a partnership, corporation, LLC, or some other entity. The address where the business is conducted, a mailing address for the business, if different, all telephone numbers, the start date in which the business will begin in the county, the name and address of the person filling out the application, and the nature of the business. The applications will be forwarded to the county manager's office and the county departments that require review and approval of the application, such as the planning department, um, building inspector.
Let, let me note here that, that is very similar to what we commonly, uh, and is required of ABC permities. They have an application process for similar information they're required to provide to the state ABC commission. They then have another sheet as part of that application process that they're required to submit to the local government. And as part of that application process, they have to undergo a fire inspection, uh, a zoning, a zoning, and well, at least the zoning officer has to indicate that it is a proper, uh, use for business allowed at that location. Um, and the fire marshal also has to sign off. And then that comes to the county manager or the city manager to ultimately sign off that the, the county or city has no objection to issuance of the permit. So, again, ABC permities are already going under a similar type of process.
So would they have to go through this process, too? It sounds very burdensome to do it twice. Just seems like a, a thick lev- a thick layer of government here. Uh, a lot of hoops to jump through if I'm, uh, a small business.
No.
It really is just a matter of filling out this application, and then the burden is then on the departments to do an inspection and make sure they're compliant.
Let's just say, who's, who would that?
So, Mike, go ahead.
Okay, so hypothetically, let's say I've been in business in Currituck County for twenty years. I've had a commercial business running out of, a barn. Okay, I'm now required to get a business license. I get the business license. Does now inspections, are they required to do an inspection of my facility for the fire marshal? If he comes in and says, gosh, you need all sorts of fire sprinkler systems now based on blah, 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 now all of a sudden, I've got a hundred-thousand-dollar upgrade on my business I have to do to continue to be in business. Is that, could that happen?
No, so I, well, as of right now, this draft has it effective January one, twenty-twenty-four, so it wouldn't apply to the businesses that are already in existence. It would be for any new businesses.
They'd be exempt from any fire inspections.
I don't even know how you can say it.
Hold on, wait a minute, wait, Bill's got, Bill's got a response.
No, okay, I mean.
Hang on. Bill, Bill, so, come on up, come on up.
No one is exempt from fire inspections.
Commercial business is not exempt from fire inspections.
I was about ready to torpedo your whole line.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm doing a hypothetical out there, so what were you saying?
I may not know your business is in that barn right now.
Okay.
Okay, but it's not exempt from the fire code. The problem we have is, like Ike said, this, this will be a tool for the county right now so that a business gets, a new business coming into the county could come talk to us before they go lease and buy a building or something, because when it happens, we end up being the bad guys. We go out, I know recently, a couple of months ago, you wrote an email to Ike about?
Yep.
That, that was a house and a, and a garage.
project to a house.
And they turned it into a commercial business. And we went in there, nice as could be, hey, we understand, we just want you to get compliance, and we're gonna help you get compliance. Anybody heard of us shutting down a business?
No.
We don't do that. We try to get compliance. We're not out to tear people down and cost them hundreds, thousands of dollars. But when they go into a business that, and what we're supposed to do is pu- protect the public. When a public comes into one of your businesses, they should have the affordability to know that they're safe. They're going into a business where the exits aren't locked, that there's enough exits to get out of, that there's proper bathrooms, that it's handicap accessible. These are all the things that, when you go into a place, you expect that, don't you? You expect when you sit down to dinner with your family that the hood has been inspected recently. And that when, if there's a fire, that you can get out of the place. That's what it's about.
So I guess, one, one of my, because, believe it or not, this is not a new issue, right? Companies coming in or somebody trying to establish a business, and then all of a sudden finding out. What I've seen over the years, though, is the lease is already signed, the money's already paid, or the building's already. The money's already paid or the building's already purchased. And then they go in and all of a sudden, you're still going to be in the role of the bad guy, right? And so one of the things that over the years we've tried to do, and I'll throw Josh Bass under the bus, will not really be on the bus, is that, you know, the purpose of the chambers was, has always been to try and educate people that are trying to come to the county, want to do a business. Same thing, you know, I'm sure that he said, listen, you need to get with planning and you need to find out what exactly the requirements are in your building before you go and do this. Because you still have companies that are buying the Dollar General and want to put a restaurant in. And we know that two different purposes, you can't do that. So at the end of the day, there might be a reduction in the folks that, you know, didn't get or got a building, you know, or a business license. But I'm not sure it's going to prevent what you're currently going through. In fact...
If they can come talk to us before they do it.
And I think that's the communication, that's an education, that's not a licensure. What I'm, when I look at all of this, right, and now we've got the departments that are going to have to sign off on a business license? We can't even get, sorry, we can't even get all of the departments to sign off on a technical review committee for a project going in. And that's once a month. And, you know, no comment, no comment, no comment. We, we're, until we can get what we have on our plate down, I don't know why, well, I don't know how we're going to take on this. Plus enforcement of this, again, we already have enforcement challenges with the codes that we already have on the books. And now, again, Selena, you kind of alluded to it. This is, I mean, I have no problem with a business that wants to voluntarily do this so that they can get on the website, they can get the attention. Because I think the website's a great idea, right? But to make it compulsory, I just...
So what do you say to the business that can't get, do business with other companies because they don't have a business license?
They can voluntarily get a business license. I'm just saying, don't make it compulsory.
Well, yeah, why would you not want to know who's doing business in your county?
I think ideally we would, but I'm not in a position that I would require it.
And the problem is, is exactly what Mike said, I'm a guy that's been running a commercial business out of my barn for 25 years. And now we find out you've been running an illegal business out of your barn for 25 years. You know, I, you know, my problem is I have repeatedly had to deal with people opening up business and they do it illegally. We hear about it all the time. You have complained again and again and again about the enforcement side of it. Well, you know, it does give us the tools to enforce those issues.
But if it's only for new businesses, I don't understand how this solves anything.
No, it should be for every business. It's not new.
And that's direction I would need from y'all. So we could either make it effective moving forward. I mean...
Okay, Mrs. Johnson sews military patches on somebody's uniform. You know, does Mrs. Johnson? I mean, this has happened where, who was it, where they had to have, you know, where they had county contracts for small work, where they had to have all this insurance and all the other different stuff and it was Mrs. Johnson did this and then they couldn't do work. I mean, like, I see Beaumont's point and I actually agree with him on some of the stuff where Paul, Beaumont's, Commissioner Beaumont. But like, I see some of it, like you said, but especially if somebody's, you know, then it does, it does make Bill and them and their department. I've, you know, they try to help people all the time. Your guys are great, you're great. I mean, like I said, they do a good job. I don't know how we could keep up with it because it's even more, they're hammered. I know you guys are busy. I see your trucks all day long, all over the place. They're busy. You know, far as who's going to keep up with 5,000 things that we have to track if we're charging somebody a fee?
Yeah. To go in a different direction, how does this square with the repeal of the privilege license that was done in the 2014 Senate bill?
That, so this draft requires no fee. Now, I do think that we can require a nominal fee, like maybe $10 per business just for the administration.
If you're going to be chiming in the peanut gallery, you can leave. We're here having a discussion. If you guys want to talk about it afterward done, that's fine. But you're not going to talk over my county attorney. Thank you.
Yeah, so this would not be like a tax. I know some people have been saying that around the community. This, if anything, it would be a nominal, say $10 fee just for the administration. And that's okay. We're not charging like 50, $100 or whatever.
But again, looking at the approval process and all of the departments that have to go out and may have to physically look at the facility to approve that license, I mean, what I'm hearing is our folks are busy, right? I don't know how we add this to the current labor pool because this will come in and then we're not going to have the time or the resources to be able to do this. And the next budget year, we'll be hiring one or two business license folks. And this is how the government grows. This is...
May I say something, Mrs. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I apologize to Megan? I just sent you an email. Have you had a chance to read it? And it goes along with what Commissioner Owen Etheridge said. And this is from Senator Hennick's legislative assistant. It says, can municipalities and or counties still impose business license requirements? Is that not the same?
The question asked is not what is proposed.
Right, correct.
Clearly, cities and counties may not impose privileged licenses or taxes. That was repealed by the General Assembly several years ago. This is under the authority of 153A, 134 in the general statutes, which provides a county may by ordinance regulate and license businesses. And so that's what this is. This is under that statutory authority, which still is applicable to county licensing businesses within its boundaries. And so the answer to that question is not applicable to this issue.
Well, I could just...
When it says still impose business license requirements.
I have four businesses in Estaglon County and I'm okay with filling this out. But I am tired of people getting in business and competing against me that have no business being in business. And I mean, it's just, it's amazing to me that we have people call this county routinely looking for a business license because that is normal way of doing business everywhere except in this county. And they're flabbergasted when they can't get one. It is amazing to me that we don't have that.
That would be a great question. How many other counties in our region require a business license?
I don't know about counties or cities or towns in this, in this region right offhand.
But there are several counties that have this, but to answer within our region, I'm not sure, but I could get that for you.
Yeah, I would like that information.
I got another question. How does this affect agriculture? Are we going to make farmers be licensed under this? Are they going to go in and inspect their?
Farmers exempt. Perma-Fire Farms exempt from building code.
All right, so you're in the clear.
I just wanted to be clear.
You're in the clear.
Okay. So you brought up T R C. T R C is a good tool because it gets people to talk to us beforehand. So I'm going to give you a situation. I'm going to throw out Brady's Outdoor Equipment. They're not even accounting tomorrow. But they go through T R C, they jump through all the hoops, they install fire hydrants, they install the parking, go through all the hoops and we give them their business. Bob's Lawn Car opens around the corner in his garage in his single-family dwelling. And he is doing better with business. He's taking business from Brady Outdoor Equipment because he's cheaper and he does, and like Bob's saying here, you got a commercial business operating. He hasn't gone through T R C or any of that stuff, but yet he's competing against a company that's done everything that we've asked him to do through our ordinances. How is that fair to that, to that business?
So to respond to that, I would say there's a couple of businesses you can run out of your home. You can do hair, you know, hair, whatever. I think you can do pet stuff. You can do auto mechanics, I believe, right? And so all of those people are directly in competition with folks that have brick and mortar. And I, and I agree with you. There's, there's a pro and a con. There's a reason why somebody goes to Brady's because they want to buy the $8,000 diesel lawnmower that they can't get it. They're like 15 now.
What you're missing, the point is that's not a single-family dwelling. The house that's on that property is a single-family dwelling. That garage that's detached from it is a commercial building by code.
Which, what are we referring to?
He's talking about the difference between if they were having that of a zone business and then somebody's house. John goes and picks up his lawnmower that they done and the thing, something falls off the jack and then breaks John's leg.
Bring the public to your property, to your property.
Your house.
You're turning it into a commercial operation.
So here, you can't do beauty care.
You can do it. You can do up to 10%. They're getting ready to do, I think they're going to try to do 50% of the building. Daycare is in a house. A daycare in a house in a single-family dwelling, wherever you got that daycare, it's part of an educational occupancy. The state gives us a form to go through that they got to have a fire alarm in there, in wherever they got that area. They have their house, which is the single-family dwelling, but whatever they're operating, whether you're doing a real estate business, if you bring the public in to do business in your house, you're allowed up to 10% and they consider an accessory use to the single-family dwelling. It has to meet certain rules. If you're an accountant and you don't bring nobody in, you can have an officer in your house.
Don't they have to apply to be able to be able to legally run a home business?
Again...
No, because we don't have a business license.
This is what we're talking about, that you have in the county that people don't go. We don't go knocking on people's doors because we know...
You can operate a home occupation within certain parameters, yes.
Within certain parameters.
Right. You have a right ability to do that. But it's designed for a little, someone could do sewing and alterations in their home. That's okay.
Yeah, and I just use that as example.
Right, that's not...
A professional like CPA that has an office in their home.
Right. Which, they're all over the place.
But I'll give you an example. There's a business that's running what would be considered a acceptable business. And I'm sure they'd have the builder's business license if they did. We're currently trying to enforce how they violated the ordinance, right? One wash trailer, instead they've got sometimes up to four. And so it comes back to enforcement and it comes back to, you know, that whole, that whole deal. And again, I don't know, this is going to keep honest people honest. They're still going to be, you know...
Nope, that's always the case, right?
Right. You're still going to have kids that are going to cut grass, that are legally supposed to have a business license in order to be able to do that.
And from my perspective, like I said, for me to have a tool that at least got them to come in and talk to us before they go into something, and again, you can look right to the north here, we got a single-family dwelling turned into a bookstore. It may have been a architect or a lawyer's office back how many years ago? I don't know. But I imagine it was originally in a house. But the floor loads in that for a bookstore are a lot different from what was an architect or a...
Past assault was a house forever.
And he went through all the hoops.
All the hoops.
To get his business to be in a restaurant there.
But he didn't need a license to do that. He used wisdom, which said, I need to make sure that I'm talking to the right people. But again, you know, people have signed leases and, you know, they sign leases and they go down the road and all of a sudden now they want to open their business and you're, you're the guy that has to come and say, oh, by the way, you can't do that. So to me, it goes back to education. I mean, it'd be interesting to know, and there's no way of knowing, how many people actually contact the Chamber of Commerce and go, hey, I'm thinking about A, B, or C, or contact planning and zoning and go A, B, and C, versus how many don't contact anybody and just open a business.
And we had talked about doing that in the county when we got rid of the Economic Development Director. We had talked about, we were going to have somebody, if somebody was interested in having a business, that there was a person that they could call to lead them through everything that they needed to.
We even tried to engage the chamber in that effort.
Yeah, it's like that.
Well, the other thing is too, like if you own a brick and mortar restaurant, and I'm not against food trucks, I know this is recorded, I buy food of food trucks. But I mean, there are rules, like if you have a food truck and you just pull up and I'm at, I don't know, Tractor Supply Monday, I'm at Mayak Farm Market. You know, those, you know, which competition's not bad. You know, there's plenty of work out there for everybody. But that brick and mortar guy has a lot more requirements and you know that is, and like you said, far as education and enforcement, you know, they have to go through their stuff to get set up. But I mean, are they, are they ever checked again?
As far as food trucks, they got a license, they got a tag on them. I got nothing to do with them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, so I'm, that's where...
Some are staying 24 hours.
Yeah, where Commissioner, yeah, and they're just left there on the property. But like where Commissioner Beaumont said too, I mean, and not, I love your department, not knocking your department. Enforcement and education, those are my little hangups on some of the stuff too.
You know, you can't enforce everything and you certainly can't educate when you stop under the no parking sign or no stopping sign.
Oh, yeah.
Right? I mean, people keep saying that and we keep saying educate, you know, and, and the reality is you can't lead a horse to water and make it drink. And, you know, you can, but you can hand people at least an opportunity to intercept them and maybe help out before it gets out of hand. Before Bill's got to go knock on your door, you got to go shut your business down, you signed the lease. And right to your point, Paul, that they signed the lease before they, you know, even considered where they were going with this business.
Or they might even bought the place.
Or bought the place. So we can't catch them all. We certainly can't catch them all. But anyway, it seems obvious that this is going to die here tonight. So I guess we're beating a dead horse.
I've been just kind of waiting my turn.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Fire off.
All right. I just wanted, I'm going to give a personal experience. I've been thinking about this, pros, cons, grew up in this county, but there's been a lot of businesses that have been operating in this county ever since I can remember, long time. We never had business license and I understand, I hear the pros and cons. But there are some businesses out there and mine, including, I had a recent incidence where I own a heating or conditioning business and I tried to open up accounts from vendors outside of our area where I needed specialized equipment. First thing they ask me, we need a copy of your business license. I said, well, the county doesn't have a business license. Well, I'm sorry, we need some proof documentation to open up account. Well, I said, well, they don't have it. What else? I said, I have a North Carolina contractor's license. That's not good enough. I can get you a copy of the state, my state incorporation papers. That doesn't show you're in the county at a specific address. We need proof. I said, well, I don't have it. What do I do? Well, sorry, sir, we can't open up an account. So I understand not every business out there needs a document and it doesn't have to be a business license. I don't care what it is. But there's got to be some official document that if a business, including my business, Rebel Rides and Grandy called me, chewing me out because he couldn't get an account opened up, because there's no official document in the county that states that this business is doing business in the county at a specific address on an official document, we don't have it. Now, I pay over a hundred dollars to the chamber. I get a sticker from window, I get a welcome letter, but a letter from the chamber wouldn't even suffice. So I've asked the chamber to come up with a solution because right now I haven't heard back if there's a solution or not. We have nothing for, it might be 5% of the businesses in this county, might be 2%, I don't know. But every so often, a business needs an official document to conduct business. I need one for my business when I tried to open up an account. I don't need it all the time, but I needed something. Nothing was there. I don't care if it's called a business license, business registration, if we can get a letter from the tax department saying, hey, this business has registered with the county, they pay their personal property taxes, they're located at X, Y, Z. You know, something that I can get from Currituck County stating that I am a legitimate business in this county at a specific address and the county knows about it. And if I had something like that, I could have opened up an account. I could not. Rebel Rides and Grandy couldn't do it. He has an automotive place. He tried it. I know he's called Bob. He's called me because we don't have something. Again, I don't care if it's called a business license or what it's called, but we don't have anything to help all the businesses in this county when something like that comes up. And it's hitting me personally with my business.
Well, I would say I know in the past, when I was in private practice and handling closings for commercial businesses coming into an area, that we would get a zoning compliance letter from the unit of local government in which the business was going to locate and perhaps that might suffice.
We need something for businesses because, like I said, I know of a couple of businesses that have been turned down because they couldn't provide an official document that they're doing business at a specific address in this county and the county knows about it. We don't have it. Now, I know businesses license came up. Yeah, that'd be a great document. I'm not saying we need it, but we don't have anything in this county to help a business when they need it. Whether it's called a, you know, a business recognition letter, I don't care what it's called. Well, you know, maybe it's volunteer, I don't know. But if I had someplace I could go to ask for that documentation, I'd have asked for it and gotten it. But we don't. So, I mean, that's my two cents worth on this. And again, you know, I don't care if it's called a business license or what, but there are certain businesses that need something produced by this county showing documentation that a business is doing business at an address and we don't have it.
Is there a slimmed down version of this?
Yes. I mean, I can, I can slim this down as much as... I mean, I can slim this down as much as...
Well, I mean, you know...
I mean, this is just a basic...
At the end of the day, you know, really, it's about business registration and just knowing who's in business in our county. And if we can avail them of our services to help them, that's great. If they don't wanna accept those services, then that's on them, and then Bill shows up and gives them the bad news, or one of his people.
And we can stay back and say, "You had the opportunity." I mean, I don't have a problem with any of this, with the exception of, I would not... I don't think it should be required.
Right.
That's the only thing.
Yeah, if it was a volunteer, I'd do a volunteer because I need it.
Yeah.
Because my business needs it, I'd voluntarily do it. Not every business needs it, and I could then... Then fine, if they don't need it, that's fine with me. But if a business like mine needs it, yeah, I'd voluntarily sign up for something because I needed it. Anyways, that's my two cents.
Yeah.
I definitely think if it's something that we could make voluntary that is designed to help business, not inundate our departments, not inundate another level of government. I think, you know, when we did away with that economic development position, we talked about having that point person, and I think we have that, and I think that this is the perfect opportunity to assist and aid businesses like yours might... That need that assistance. And walking them through what is and is not acceptable, maybe it is that letter of compliance that gets you the loan that you need. Whatever that is, I think that's what we should be exploring.
And it's not alone, it's just to conduct just general business, open accounts.
It legitimizes your claim to have a license.
Voluntary is something that we looked at several years ago with the Buy Local campaign that brought in people, local businesses, and they participated, and it gave us a pretty good basis of an inventory of businesses in the county at that time. Was it perfect? No. But it was voluntary, and a lot of people did participate.
Okay.
I think a lot of people, when they saw it, "I had a business license. I don't do any work in the municipalities in Virginia anymore." Chesapeake, if you have a license in Chesapeake and then you just stopped doing work up there. I sent a letter, I sent an email, and they gave me a court date for not renewing it. And I said, "I've already sent y'all emails and a letter and said that I don't do work in Chesapeake anymore because the cost of fuel was a couple of years ago. It wasn't worth it." And my court date got thrown out. That was good, but that's what I think a lot of people, when you say that, they thought. I mean, people...
Yeah, we're not... We're not...
Because...
We're not Chesapeake.
Oh, no.
But I mean, that's what people thought. I mean, like the different... I had one in Suffolk before.
Business license, Suffolk business license check, but yeah, don't you think they hit me every year for my license? Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I sent a letter and an email, and then, like I said, I got a court date for not going or paying 50 bucks.
This draft addresses that it would be automatically renewable every year, so there's that, to your point.
Okay.
Automatically renewable with a fee or just automatically?
Automatically renewable.
This doesn't have a fee structure associated with it.
I mean, we talked about just an administrative cost.
Right. Well, we never defined that. It's not... We haven't defined a fee or anything. So, you know, what's here is really just outlining how to register a business at the end of the day, and the county's responsibility to that. So...
I agree with what Selena said.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so as I said, for the folks here and to the board, this is all gonna be up on the internet for everyone to see and understand, the discussion that takes place, some of these deeper discussions. Thank you all for a very good discussion this afternoon, and can I have a motion to adjourn this work session? Thank you. Thank you. All favor.
Aye.
Thank you all.